Get started, um, tonight's work session. Uh, the first, uh, item is empower rural Iowa. Excuse me, innovation housing 2.0 grant, Grow Fairfield. Ed?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, before I start, just a brief, um, housing update. Our Seventh Street House, the home for Iowa, is just about complete. The garage is just about done. We have a little bit of concrete work to do on walkways. Flooring has been put in the house. We'll be putting, bringing in appliances soon. And then grading, doing the final grade and getting, uh, seeded and landscaped. So we hope to have an open house by the end of the month for that home. Uh, Sixth Street has, has been delivered. Uh, a little bit, the concrete pad is going to go down and that garage will be constructed very quickly and probably this week and into next week. So I think we're just close behind, maybe a couple of weeks later. So we'll have these two homes prepared. Um, I'd asked Melanie if the council had received any updates on the, uh, infrastructure work that's going on at Sunrise Trail. Um, they, they did, they have begun work, uh, out there. And my conversation with Marcus from French Reniker said that they hope to have the inner loop road, um, completed by the end of the year. And then probably in the spring, they'll be finishing the driveway coming in. But they have a contract date of May 31st. So we're telling contractors who are inquiring for us that, uh, it'll be available June 1st for housing development. We've had, in the last two weeks, since the nice progress addition that, uh, the, uh, the Southeast Iowa Union did about the project, we've had four local contractors in interested in buying multiple lots, two to three lots. So we think we'll have an active year there next year and it's off to a great start out there. Um, we're very popular when it comes to housing at this point in time. So we were approached by, um, Iowa State University Extension Outreach. And that's the group that did the housing readiness study a couple of years ago. And, uh, they've been following what we've been doing here. They're very impressed with a lot of the progress that the city is making. And, um, they basically, uh, want to put together through a grant process, a set of standards for communities to go through, uh, to develop housing in their communities, to kind of map it out, uh, with their resources, with policy, uh, with local initiatives and partners. So out of it comes, um, what's referred to as the Rural Innovation Program Housing Grant. Um, the grant is, uh, designed to, to fund creative solutions facing rural communities. And we'll get to the creative solutions part in a minute. Expand housing stock, leverage funding programs, attract investment and reward innovative solutions. Um, the grant amount will be $50,000. It'll be a one to one-half match. So it's $50,000 for $25,000 match. Um, the match can be a mix of public and private donations. The city would be the applicant. Only cities under 20,000 population are, um, allowed to apply for this grant. And the grant is seeking, as I described a little bit ago, it was replicable models. Uh, so again, this is something that, that what's unique about this is that Iowa State University Outreach and Extension will be a partner of ours in the grant. Um, so the outcome of the grant in terms of getting some of these kinds of innovative solutions into, um, a form that other cities can use is the part that they want to invest in along with us. And they want to use that part of the grant to, um, work with, um, with Fairfield through all of, all of the, all of these different entities, uh, to come up with the best outcome. Um, now, what's included in the grant, um, construction and land acquisition, major innovations and repairs of buildings and, uh, uh, pertinent, uh, structures, uh, site development, including demolition of property preparation, professional services such as engineering, planning, technical assistance, architectural design, consulting and grant writing, and personnel time dedicated to the project. Personal benefits are not eligible. Anyway, these are some of the areas. And we zeroed in on the site preparation and demolition because I know that the, that you have an intention to focus some dollars on demolition. And, um, there's been a, an indication of a private, a donation from the Chuck and Jan Espy Foundation to fund demolition. And, um, Chuck has been apprised of the grant and is willing to use $50,000 of what he intended to donate towards this grant. So that would be the, the city match. Uh, and that would, you know, leverage the most out of the grant for both the practical side of getting the demolition done that we're seeking and also, uh, becoming a viable partner in this effort to produce something that would be replicable. Um, the, the Iowa State University, uh, Extension and Outreach would basically be bringing, um, their, uh, architectural team with, uh, students to help process this over probably about a four to six month period of time after the grant is awarded. So, um, and, you know, the city has utilized their services before for the, their design services. Uh, they're, they're really wonderful to work with. And, uh, Mark Rennig, I don't know whether you all met, I don't know whether Mark spoke here years ago when, uh, prior to the Rural Housing Readiness Grant, but Mark is a part of this as well. Um, let's see. Give you a little bit more of information. This was a, uh, vision statement that was drafted by Iowa State University, uh, about the, the project. Fairfield is stepping up to lead the way on rethinking how we care for and reinvest in the homes that we already shape, that already shape our neighborhoods by exploring innovative approaches to rehabilitation and infill development. This initiative brings together Iowa State University Extension and Outreach, Grow Fairfield and local partners to develop an innovative model for aging housing reinvestment. So this won't be just about demolition. It'll also be about an evaluation process for homes that still can be rehabbed. Uh, we've talked about that. I think that's everybody's priority is to save the homes that we can save. Um, but this will give us a roadmap for that, some way to evaluate and to process that. Um, the scope of the grant focused on Fairfield's aging housing stock with emphasis on rehabilitation, aging in place and infill development opportunities, investigates what makes housing reinvestment effective and what barriers exist. It builds on Fairfield's, uh, Rural Housing Readiness Assessment work and aligns with the broader statewide efforts to create a replicable rural housing, uh, design model. So, uh, one of the things that I'll introduce you to a term that was new to me, maybe, I suspect Melanie's heard the term before, but, um, one of the things that will be an outcome is creating a pattern book. Um, I believe this is an architectural term, but it's, um, a replica, it creates replicable tools and strategies for housing investment and including design guidelines, architectural strategies, best practices in preservation, sustainability and adaptive reuse. So there's going to be something, again, just something practical and then something that is also practical, but I think maybe, uh, from a policy perspective puts us ahead of other communities in terms of how we go about, um, saving our, our housing stock that's worth saving and moving quickly to progress towards other good housing options. Um, what you're being asked tonight is to approve a resolution. The application is due at the end of the month. I think it's, uh, August 29th. Um, we've already, I don't know whether Faith is here, but I think, so, uh, we've already been meeting with Faith, uh, hoping that she would be empowered by the city to, um, to work on gathering the information for this grant. We'll be co-writing it with, uh, with, you know, a number of people and, and including Iowa State University. And, um, so, and, and we've got everything laid out and we're prepared to get, prepared to get started, uh, with that. So the resolution of support from the city council, um, a letter of support, uh, from the mayor are two things that we would like to get, uh, from you this evening. Um, there won't be anything out of pocket from the city, but there will be a pass-through from the city in the same way that we did it with the Rural Housing Assessment. That was a $10,000 pass-through, um, to Grow Fairfield. Um, and it came upon completion of, of the grant or actually, uh, a little bit later. But aside from that, we're not going to ask for too much of anyone's time. I think when we get into the planning, uh, part of it, uh, yes, there's going to be interaction with the city. The other thing I forgot is that we are forming, we are going to be utilizing the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, which was something that came out of the city's, uh, committee that, um, Councilman Gandy oversaw during the housing readiness, uh, program. Um, that, that group has been working on the infill housing projects that we have going right now. We're expanding that a little bit and, um, going to, uh, get a letter of support from that group also to be a part of this process. So that's a lot. Um, any questions so far?
So it looks like there is going to be a match from the city, but that's actually coming from, directly from a donor?
Yes, yes. And, you know, we'll, we'll get that formally established, but I have a verbal from Chuck and Jan Espy, yes.
And did you find out Rebecca about doing restricted?
I haven't gotten an answer yet.
Yeah, okay. So the plan, well, the sort of plan is Rebecca's checking into, um, how we can do that on her books. We're hoping that we can do it as a restricted.
Or at least an obligated.
Yeah, restricted or obligated, a new line item. So it'll be used just for this purpose, for demolitions.
But only if the grant's awarded.
Pardon me?
Only if the grant is awarded would the money be given to the city.
Um, not necessarily.
Yeah.
Cause he had already, he had made a prior pledge to the mayor. Um, and he's had some health issues, so that's kind of taken him away from his business for a little while, but it, it would be up to him, Doug, yeah.
This is competitive process or?
It's competitive, but we think we've got a good team. We have the people who wrote the grant, who want to see it done. Yeah, it's, it, it will be competitive.
Talks about the scoring and the documents that you have.
And I think it'll, uh, the award will be announced in October. And they, they basically said, you know, money would be available as soon as, uh, as soon as the grant is awarded. So if there were any projects lined up for this fall, that would be fine as far as demolition.
It's a pretty good opportunity. So, um, we wanted to present it now because we do, we did put a couple of things on the council action items. So, um, wanted to make sure that if you had any questions.
Yeah, which is fine. There's no action that needs to be taken right now, but.
Yeah.
Encourage your support in the meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ed. Uh, next on our agenda is vacant buildings. And I think Melanie, you have the, the list was attached.
I needed to color code my papers tonight. Um, so follow-up to the discussion from the last meeting. Um, what you have in front of you tonight is a list of 74 buildings, um, not properties, uh, but, uh, standing buildings that have previously had water or sewer service, um, that currently don't, um, or that have not had water or sewer, sewer usage in more than a year. So you'll see on there, there's a column for when their last water bill was. And, um, a couple of those say active. And then if you look over on the ones that say active, uh, most of those I think are on the second page, um, you'll see in the notes that it says, you know, no usage since, um, 2023 or '09. And so they've left those accounts active, but there's no regular usage. Um, so no one actively living or using that building. As far as, um, developing a sort of registry, some cities go as low as no water or sewer usage for three months. Um, obviously that would increase this list, um, but this is, I guess, a starting point for discussion.
I had a question. The ones that say under condition, normal?
Yeah, so.
Is that really normal?
Um, so on the assessor's site, there is, um, these ratings. Um, and I don't know if Terry can speak to any of that, um, a little bit better than I, uh, but it is almost like a one through five, uh, with normal maybe being a four. And then there's like an above that. So, um, I would say normal is, uh, in a better condition.
Inhabitable?
What?
And habitable?
Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah. The, um, the observed is actually the inhabitable ones, ones that don't have windows or, um, part of the building is falling down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the placard are ones that we have actually red-tagged. And then, um, very, you know, very poor. And then it kind of goes up from there in condition. Um, I did sort the list from kind of worst to, um, best condition, at least based off of the assessor's site condition.
Mm-hmm.
And then commercial properties, um, don't have the same rating system. So those are listed as NA. There's a couple residential ones that have NA and, to be honest, I'm not sure why they have NA per, they just haven't been looked at recently or, I'm not exactly sure. So in total, that kept, the count of all of those that are on these two pages is totally 74.
Okay. And have you looked at other ordinances? I forget.
Um, we've looked at a few.
Yeah.
Like I said, the, um, some cities go as low as, you know, three months with no water or sewer usage. Uh, you know, John brought up the point of when we say, um, that using a definition of not having any utilities would more likely be an abandoned property that could be taken or, um, could go under the 657A process. Whereas these, um, ones that just don't have any usage, but maybe the utility is still there, or maybe they don't have water and sewer, but they still have electricity, um, those are going to be more of the vacant properties, perhaps. They are liveable, they're just not being used. I think we can all think of a few commercial buildings that are just sitting vacant, um, but maybe their conditions are, um, that they are usable. So, um, based off of, you know, kind of John's discussion last time and, you know, a little bit what we're seeing here is it's, it's two different initiatives. You have your ones that are inhabitable, that you're going to be looking at demolition. The vacant building is really to go after the people who are, I'll say, aren't contributing to society. You know, they're, they're just there and it's not, they don't have anyone living there. They don't, they're not doing anything other than, they're not falling down. They're not necessarily becoming worse, but they're not actively doing anything else. They, you know, they're not going and buying gas or groceries in town. It's just an empty building.
Are we at the point, uh, from your perspective, to start working on an ordinance?
I think so. Um, it wouldn't necessarily be, um, an ordinance, I wouldn't have any problem with the ordinance. I think, um, staffing-wise, uh, that discussion needs to continue as well. Um, and how it would be implemented, but I think talk, you know, discussing the fine points of the, um, registry would be fine. Um, you know, other cities, for example, require insurance or, uh, maybe they have a base fee, but then they continue to add on. Well, if the building's not insured, it's an additional fee or if the building, um, I was trying to think of what some of the other things Shelby said when she looked into this. Um, but yeah, it's kind of like it's a base fee, but then if there's this, then it has this, or if it hasn't had this, it kind of continues to add on. So, um, there's, each city does it a little bit differently. I, I can say that there's not, it's not like every city uses the same standard. So definitely it would take some time to have some discussion on where we would like to see it.
Okay.
And are you talking about a, like a registration ordinance for people registering the vacant buildings?
Yeah.
And then increasing maybe fees every year, potentially?
Yeah, yep. Um, I know we talked about, so Atamwa, Oski, Washington, and I think even Mount Pleasant has it. So, I mean, the surround, the county seat towns surrounding us all have it. Um, you know, we could start by looking at those and comparing, um, the fine points of each of their ordinances and see how we, which parts we like and.
Okay, well, we can even work on that in a work session in two, so. Continue to do a little research and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
All righty. Wow, we got down early tonight. So, I guess we have 10 minutes before council starts, so. Call the meeting to order.
Please call the roll.
Tohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gambi?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
We do have a couple changes to the agenda tonight. The last resolution on page one is not ready, so we're going to delete that. And then under committee and board reports, we're going to move the Walton Lake Project memo of internal workdays down under administrator and department reports. And with that, are there any changes, council, that you have? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the July 28, 2025 council meeting. Approval of the August 1, 2025 payroll in the amount of $167,002, 2868. Approval of liquor license for Asian FAB Bistro. Approval of ACH payment to the Department of Revenue in the amount of $12,642.05. Approval of total claims in the amount of $391,407.44. We had two claims, more than $75,000. Krisner Contracting for the fire station, $144,288.88. And Waste Management for $80,372.43.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Circle.
Moved by Gandhi, second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
I did review the claims and everything seemed in order.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
I abstained from the approval of the minutes from the July 28 council meeting as I was not in attendance.
Okay. So go ahead and call the roll. Gambi?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. There's no public forum or appearances today, so we'll move on to resolution, action items, and ordinances. Our first action item is consideration to authorize budgeted purchase of new computers. Want to talk about that?
Sure. Our computers are, the ones that we have scheduled are six-plus years old and they can no longer be updated. And we did have to make a purchase of six because they would not, once the financial programs were updated, then our computers could not use the financial programs. So it was going to shut the city down. So we had to make those purchases. But now, the rest of our staff, including myself, today I was trying to work with Access to get things patched through. Our emails have been down and it's time. And I believe that everything that we're asking for is out of warranty. And I believe that there's been, our Park Server, which is also on there, is also out of warranty and it is beyond its useful life.
Questions?
I was just going to ask you, do we replace what's scheduled?
We do. We do. And we oftentimes will stretch that just to save money, but we get to the point where, and Access did warn us, that this Windows Update 11 is going to be an issue for us. And we thought that we had a little bit more time and we did not. So we had to make those adjustments. But we do listen, but they're like, well, we can, we can get you this far. But then there's that cutoff date and that's just kind of the game that we play. But it can be terribly expensive.
Move approval of the purchase of the new computers.
Okay, second. Moved by Flornoy, second by Caness. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Gandhi?
Yes.
Thank you. That was approved unanimously. Our next action item and resolution, these kind of go together here. The first action item is consideration of engineering services agreement with French Rennecker and Associates for conceptual layout and grant applications for safety improvements. And Melanie's going to talk us through these two things here.
Yeah. So kind of lumping them two together because the August 15 grant deadline for the T-SIP kind of snuck up on us. And we proceeded based off of the Public Safety and Transportation Committee's recommendations from probably about a year ago, which was to seek funding for crosswalks on each corner of Main and Burlington. This, after that recommendation was made by Public Safety and Transportation last February, I had brought a conceptual drawing for Burlington from Second to B Street that incorporated the need to replace the traffic signals due to the age, excuse me, the need to replace the traffic signals at Main and Burlington due to their age. It incorporated the interest that there has been in the two-way streets in the downtown as well as interest in the bike lanes. And then also incorporated that urging from the community to improve the pedestrian, pedestrian access at Main and Burlington. So, but with that being said, that was what I presented in February. What Marcus with French Rennecker has been helping me with and what we intend to apply for can be done with or without the two-way streets and with or without the bike lanes. Jason, if you bring up that image that's on the draft application. So what we are proposing applying for is adding nodes or larger nodes that will allow the pedestrians to be more visible, particularly on the northeast corner. It's going to prevent people from using that parking to make an illegal right-hand turn. And then we'll also give more room to eventually put in the traffic signal poles that currently are causing sight distance issues where the pedestrian can't be seen because the pole is in the way. As you can see, that, you know, the bike lanes aren't shown on here, the, there's no change in the parking. And so any of those things that are added can be done with paint. You know, if we go to two-way streets, the angle on the northwest corner can be done with paint. It could also be done with concrete, but what we're, or what we are applying for doesn't hurt any of those future decisions. Also, let's see, and then Jason, back onto that, page 10. What, based off of the preliminary estimates, we are looking at applying, so we're going to apply for the pedestrian improvements with this grant. And then next month, apply for a different grant that is just for the traffic signals. So two different grants. We looked at different benefit cost ratios and grants that have scored well in the past. And after talking with the DOT, this is ultimately what they recommended was to apply for just the pedestrian improvements here. And so we were looking at applying for approximately $185,000 of safety improvements of a total $320,000 project. Again, that's just the pedestrian side of things. The traffic signals would be another $300,000 to $400,000 on top of that, which is going to be another grant. So the two action items tonight, if you followed all of that, I'm sorry. First would be to authorize French Rennecker to continue to help with these two grant applications. And then the second item is to authorize that T-SIP or the Safety Improvement Program application for the pedestrian improvements.
And the engineering services agreement is $9,800, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Council?
Is there an intention to take down the lights at Court and Burlington?
So, in my opinion, that the lights at Court and Burlington should not be removed until the street is converted and is two-way because it needs to be, it needs to be a four-way stop. The pedestrians in that area need to be protected somehow in order to continue to encourage access to the square. And with the current one-way streets, we couldn't justify putting a four-way, or a three-way stop at that intersection. If we took those lights down right now, you would end up very similar to Second and Broadway that where Burlington would be through traffic, they wouldn't have to stop, and Court would have to stop. If that's what we want to move forward with, we can, but I think that Court has much more pedestrian traffic than what Broadway does and that that needs to be considered before we take those down.
What do you think the estimated remaining lifetime of those lights is?
Not a lot. And so I think that the decision on the rest of the square needs to be looked at soon. But this, you know, this application itself really doesn't impact that decision with Court. Again, when we were looking, so we did look at benefit cost, the benefit cost ratio of go ahead and including Court. And, you know, even if we got $100,000 to remove that signal, would that kind of offset any additional costs of converting the whole square? And we just found that this proposed project had the best benefit cost ratio, had the best opportunity for funding. And so we, I guess we would rather get the funding that we feel more assured of and then address Court either at a different time or through a different funding source.
Well, this is due to so much time we have before we hit to replace them or take them down.
Well, I will say that it is still covered by our insurance. So if, you know, if it's a really hard winter, I guess it's still covered on our insurance.
Could it fail in six months?
No. I mean, it wouldn't fail just to, I mean, it would take an event. You know, it would mean wind, severe ice.
Okay.
Yeah. Something hitting it.
I move to approve the engineering services agreement with French Rennecker and Associates.
Circle.
Okay, moved by Estee, second by Flornoy to approve the engineering services agreement with French Rennecker at the cost of $9,800. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call a roll. Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Gandhi?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
And then the resolution, consideration of authorization of T-SIP application for Main and Burlington improvements.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gandhi, second by Estee. Any further questions? Hearing none, please, oh yeah, go ahead.
One thing I forgot to mention is anything such as decorative, concrete or landscaping are not T-SIP eligible anyway. So what we are, we do not have any of that in the proposal. Doesn't mean that it can't be added. I think if the money is awarded, there's going to be some of that discussion to, those details to figure out. But since it's not eligible for any of the funds anyway, we just left it out and some of those details we can still discuss.
Great, thank you. Okay, go ahead and please call a roll. Gandhi?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, the next two items, we heard about at work session. So the first one is the resolution, consideration, authorizing submission of application for the Empower Rural Iowa Innovation Housing 2.0 Grant Application.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Caness, second by Estee. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Caness?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Row?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously. The next resolution is consideration to authorize Washington County Riverboat Grant Application on behalf of the City of Fairfield. Yeah, go ahead, Melanie, you want to give us the rundown on that also?
So here we are again, applying to the Washington County Riverboat Foundation. I think this will be our last opportunity to apply for this as the spring application. Hopefully, we're close to moving into the building. The intent is to apply for funds for the training tower again. The resolution does not include a dollar figure, but the, our intention is to apply for $250,000 like we have in the past. If you look at the attached project cost and funding summary with the recent change order, that does leave us a little short, but that does, that is based off of an estimated additional contingency. There is also listed on the expenses, owner provided fixtures and equipment, so that would be desks, kitchen items. And we do intend to have a list of those needed items before the end of the calendar year, that if anyone wants to donate any of those items as a tax write-off, that we will have those ready for the end of the year. So those are a few ways that we intend to work towards this shortfall, but we will apply for the, try it one more time for the riverboat application.
As I recall, that training tower was going to be available for use by other fire departments around, is that correct?
So another fire department would still have to coordinate with our fire department, you know, schedule or something like that. But yes, the intent is that up to three trucks can set up next to it. So doing multiple activities, if we would bring it, if they would bring in an instructor to teach us certain, whether it's rope activities or ladder activity, that a couple different departments could be training at the same time. Or if they wanted to do a large mutual aid, you know, a grain elevator exercise or something like that, that they could all work together. So that would be the intent with that is both to allow neighboring fire departments to utilize the space, but then also allow for some larger mutual aid type events.
Because in the resolution, it's called a regional fire training tower. Are there other fire training towers?
I believe, so I believe there is one in Atma that is used more for the licensing of firefighters, not necessarily for departments. And then I think there is one in Burlington is the next closest one after that. In the application, we do list, you know, the number of calls that we have been to, the mutual aid calls that we have been to in Washington County, as well as different, you know, large structures that we have served or served, had mutual aid calls on, so.
Great.
We do our best.
I know the beautification committee was talking about submitting the application for, to this also. Is this the only one officially that we have, will have submitted as of right now? Yes.
Yeah. I think we said beautification should bring back their applications?
Yes.
Before they submit it?
Is there a cap on how much you can ask for?
Not in the rules, but I think politically, I don't know, Mayor, you have more of an insight on that. But there is nothing in their rules.
Yeah.
Let me make a motion that we approve the submission of the Washington County Riverboat Grant.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandhi. Any further discussion?
When is the deadline to submit the application?
September 1st, right? Or 15th?
15th.
So the beautification commission, if they're going to bring forth a application, I suppose they want to do it pretty soon.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
They're just for like a quarter million dollars or more.
Okay. Any other questions? No, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandhi?
Yes.
Estee?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Gandhi?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Thank you, that's approved unanimously. The next resolution is consideration of resolution naming depositories, and the change in this from previous resolutions is we are increasing Midwest One up to 35 million, and if you looked at this earlier, it might have said 25 million, that was an error, so it should be 35 million. Okay? And maybe explain why we're doing that.
Oh, we, you guys, you council approved a note for the fire station sunrise trail and roundabout for 8.3, 8.5 million, that's supposed to be wired in tomorrow, and at the end of this month, assuming you folks approve the next resolution for step three, there's another almost 9 million coming in, so we're just going to come close to that. Granted, that money's going to go right back out, but just to be on the safe side, I don't want to go over.
Move, we approve the resolution naming depositories.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Next resolution, consideration to approve and authorize a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of 8,999,000 sewer revenue capital notes taxable series 2025 of the City of Fairfield, State of Iowa, under the provisions of the City Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of the notes. So in layman's language, that's a 40-year note at 1 and 1.25%. And this has to do with our step three financing.
And it's paid for by sewer revenue.
Correct.
Should be made clear. It's a part of the general fund.
Yeah, 40 years at what?
1.25.
That's good. Very good.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we approve the resolution.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second reading of ordinance 1269, consideration to rezone North Campus Ridge to planned unit development. So I'll open the public hearing, does anybody want to speak about the rezoning of the North Campus Ridge? Seeing nobody coming to the podium, I will close the public hearing and counsel, again, this is the second reading of ordinance 1269.
Make the motion that we move ordinance 1269 from the second to the third reading.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second reading of ordinance 1269, consideration to rezone North Campus Ridge to planned unit development. So I'll open the public hearing, does anybody want to speak about the rezoning of the North Campus Ridge? Seeing nobody coming to the podium, I will close the public hearing and counsel, again, this is the second reading of ordinance 1269.
Make the motion that we move ordinance 1269 from the second to the third reading.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next resolution, consideration to approve and authorize a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of 8,999,000 sewer revenue capital notes taxable series 2025 of the City of Fairfield, State of Iowa, under the provisions of the City Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of the notes. So in layman's language, that's a 40-year note at 1 and 1.25%. And this has to do with our step three financing.
And it's paid for by sewer revenue.
Correct.
Should be made clear. It's a part of the general fund.
Yeah, 40 years at what?
1.25.
That's good. Very good.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we approve the resolution.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second reading of ordinance 1269, consideration to rezone North Campus Ridge to planned unit development. So I'll open the public hearing, does anybody want to speak about the rezoning of the North Campus Ridge? Seeing nobody coming to the podium, I will close the public hearing and counsel, again, this is the second reading of ordinance 1269.
Make the motion that we move ordinance 1269 from the second to the third reading.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
The next ordinance is a first reading, and this has to do with, it says consideration
to rezone North, excuse me, consideration of amendment to chapter 14.04, 1.170 meters required voluntary upgrade. So basically, what this is doing is allowing for somebody who wants one of the new meters to come to the city and say they want to install that cellular-based meter device and do it right away. Oh, go ahead.
No, you had it.
No, you understand it up there.
No.
I'm looking down on that.
You had it, exactly, that's, that's the purpose of all this. I'll take any questions.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I thought I read in here that the cost levied against the requestor would be the one that we adopted by resolution, but I don't recall adopting a resolution for the cost of a meter.
We will bring that forward on the third reading, I forgot to draft it as a draft resolution, so it would go on our fee schedule, similar to like our, our equipment and everything.
I thought that was included in the budget, I guess.
What was included in the budget?
The new water, the new water meters.
Their cost, I think, is, but not the feet, if you wanted to have one installed out of our schedule.
Yes.
Oh, outside of the schedule.
Yeah.
I got it.
If it's in our schedule, we're paying for it, right?
Yes. So I will say that, you know, we've had someone, an entity come to us and say that their insurance was able to offer them a discount or a write or some sort of break if they installed one of these, so we have had different communications such as that. Nothing's wrong with their existing meter, they just would like to have something that's providing them daily reads, and so those would be the type of people that would voluntarily upgrade at their own cost.
Okay, I think with that, I need to open the public hearing, see if anybody wants to comment on this. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and counsel? Who wants to go first?
I move that we move this ordinance reading to its second.
Okay, moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Caness. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Approved unanimously. Okay, under the mayor's report, I've got several things here. Last week, the Main Street announcement was announced up in Muscatine at the downtown conference, and five of us went, some people stayed for the conference the whole two days, which was great, and so that was the official announcement. Tomorrow at 1:30, there will be a Main Street celebration, so welcome you all to come down to Central Park at 1:30, and have, we'll have some representatives from the state down here for that.
Is there anyone, anyone here who attended the conference, the entire?
Mandy Ford.
Could she speak for just a moment?
Mandy Ford was there, yeah, what?
Could she speak to for just a moment?
Oh yeah, sure, Mandy, you want to, you want to comment?
Sure.
What your experience was?
I went to the Downtown Resource Conference in Muscatine, and we talked about historic tax credits, we talked about all the downtown development options available now that because we're a Main Street community, grant applications, setting design guidelines for what the community can do for buildings, we talked about vacant building registry, just a lot of different economic opportunities for Fairfield now that we are a Main Street community.
Mandy, what's your position?
Actually, I'm a parent educator over at Washington, but my background, I have a degree in historic preservation, so I've been volunteering on the Main Street design community.
Okay, thanks.
And so I just want to build on that, so one of the things that, that Mandy has been researching, and we found out, there's something called a local, certified local government, which apparently the City of Fairfield was previously, and somehow, I think it kind of got dropped off. Apparently, we have had that designation before, we have had a grant before, that was for a Latin building?
Yeah, with a certified local government, it's a partnership with the state where you follow best practices for historic preservation, but the big key is it opens up grant opportunities to do national register nominations and surveys. So Fairfield does have several buildings listed on the national register, but for example, our historic downtown is not a historic district. If we are a historic district, that also opens it up for state and federal tax credits for the business owners to utilize. You can get a 20% federal credit and a 25% state tax credit, so 45 cents on the dollar for your qualified expenses in tax credits if you're listed as a district. So that's part of this whole Main Street process is to get that going, and if you're CLG again, then we can apply for those grants to reduce part of the cost to make that happen.
So she's going to be our subject matter expert, and I think you'll be hearing from her again, because I think we, we do want to get this certified local government back in.
And the state is looking, I did talk to some people from the state office, and they're looking at what happened and how we get back on it, so.
Yeah, and we, we may, you know, we do have a historic preservation committee, and, and that's in code, so we've got that, and we'll, I'm sure we'll be looking at potential policies, ordinances that would be useful to go down this road. So anyway, Mandy will be our gal.
Great.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, just remind people that we do have elections coming up in November, Ward Two, Ward Four, the at-large, and the mayor's seats are up for election, and papers have to be in the first day, August 25th, and, but they have to be in by September 18th. I want to invite council members sets, and to mark your calendars for September 27th. Hy-Vee is doing their annual block party, and we've told them that the city will put up a table, so it's an opportunity for us to be in the parking lot of Hy-Vee and see customers go in and out, talk to our citizens, and so Doug will be there and I'll be there, that's from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Terry Baker sent me an email that says Fairfield is in the September-October issue of the Iowan, so there's a nice article in there, I haven't read it yet, but I looked through the pages, it looks pretty cool, so you might want to check out that magazine. And also, I would like to get on our calendars a work session for September-October, maybe even, I was thinking a little bit earlier this year, September 20th, and where we could, number one, do some brainstorming about city hall discussion, current fire station, Roosevelt School, talk about our city buildings, as Doug put a bunch of questions in, in his report for us to consider, and for us to get thinking about that, and, you know. So I'm asking, does September 20th work for everybody, or?
That's kids' day.
Yeah.
It's kids' day?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was earlier.
That sounds really good.
Okay, I, I was thinking it was the first, first weekend in September.
It's the 20th.
It is the 20th? Okay, we'll skip that then, we can't do it then. What's the, and the 27th we can't do because of this, so how about the next, the first of October?
That's a Wednesday?
Well, the first weekend, the first Saturday of October.
October 4th.
October 4th. Does that work for people, as far as we know? Okay.
Yep.
Let's, let's mark that down, and, so we'll start putting that agenda together, and if there's anything that you want on that agenda for that morning, please let me know, but this will want to be the big, this will be a big talking point, I think, do some brainstorming.
Would you remind the public that we have a special election on September 2nd, the third ward?
Oh, good idea, sorry. Yeah, third ward, September 2nd is the special election, and we want people to get out and vote.
Only people in third ward can vote.
Correct, only people in third ward can vote.
When is the timeline for people to turn in their papers? Do we have?
For third ward, it's already passed, yeah.
Oh, it's already passed, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, I guess that's all I have.
Do you have a time for our number 4?
Oh, we usually start at 8:30. 8:30 on October 4th, let's start 8:40, 8:30.
Is that what you normally start?
It's always 8:30 or 9:00, I forget.
That was mine.
My phone told me it was 8:30 when I started, like, 10.
The last one.
You just have to get up early.
That's fine, I'll be here. More or less.
It's Saturday morning, no sleeping in.
Nope.
For council members.
You have eight hours.
William?
Okay, 8:30, October 4th, for a work session.
8:32.
12, yeah.
I heard us talking.
And we'll try to get out earlier than that if we can, but we'll go to noon if we have to. Okay, let's move on to the city attorney report.
Okay, a few things, and Doug, do you want to talk about what we did this afternoon, or shall I deal?
You go ahead.
All right, we've had a number of inquiries about the corner of Second and Harrison. Second and Harrison is a visibility issue, Second Street and Harrison intersect, and Harrison is a through street, it's a well-traveled street, probably traffic goes through there between 25 and 40 miles an hour. That particular intersection there is a difficulty on what we call the triangulation vision points, and so when you come to the intersection, if you're going from the east to the west, there is an obstruction basically with a large fence, also a large tree, also a box around a large tree, and what should triangulate out to being able to see a car back at, at least a car length in the area of where it comes to a stop, at the stop sign for the north and south traffic, instead, you just don't see it until you're on it. This is also a problem from the south, going north on Second Street, as well as for the traffic coming from the east on Harrison, because that intersection, there is a row of vehicles on the south side of Harrison parked most of the day that make it almost impossible when you come up Second Street north to look down Harrison towards the east and see anything, you have to pull out into the intersection around the vehicles parked all along the south side to see, and I drive that way every day, so I notice sometimes the traffic's backed up, several vehicles on Second Street, or people chances and roll out in front of the traffic to see if somebody's really coming on Harrison or not. So there are some obstacles at that intersection. We had a meeting with the recently zessed new owner of the property at that corner on the eastern side of the intersection on Second Street, very, I would say, productive as far as talking about what can be done, including a discussion about probably removing And I would say this is not a controversy, this is something we're working out in a way so that it will benefit the traffic flow, it will also benefit the visibility from at least two of the directions down there. We did get a couple ideas from the owner down there about the problems at the south side of the intersection, and we're looking into the idea of maybe some engineered mirrors that might help see a little better than what we've got right down there right now, beyond removal of fence and changing of a boundary. Now, that's one of the things that we worked on today. We've had some other things going on.
John, sorry, before you move on, can I ask you a question? We talked about this before, the last time we talked about this, but, you know, when Fillmore was closed, it was very evident that parking on that block was, is, it's literally parked on from the corner to as far as they can park down to the stop sign on Main Street.
Yeah, we've got a sign that says, "No parking here to the corner," but we've got those probably as much as the signing manual allows us to.
I guess should we consider just making that entire block no parking? Because it's a very short block and there's four, there's like three or four driveways on that block. And so it's very difficult to maneuver just the parked cars, let alone the limited visibility.
Yeah, it's awkward there. One of the owners on the immediate south side has a home occupation permit and it's a small engine repair shop. There's always at least probably a flatbed trailer with a riding mower or something parked that takes up more than the usual amount of space.
Yep.
But that's just one house. There's four or five others going to the east and each of them has something in their driveway usually, but then if they have a second vehicle, it's going to end up on the street. So it's an awkward block, to say the least. There isn't a whole lot of other alternative place for them to park. They can't park to the east, they'll be out on Main Street. There's not an alley in that block going north to south that would allow them to pull in somewhere and get out of the way. And I honestly, it's one of those blocks that when it got platted, it wasn't a worry about where vehicles are going to park back in the days before the turn of the century.
John, is that big trailer and mowers, a commercial business that shouldn't be parking there?
The trailers vary, I guess. If you've got somebody with a riding mower on a, on a smaller trailer that they'd pull over with a hitch behind their car or something like that. Those don't seem to obstruct the way if you've got a large flatbed trailer with two or three riding mowers on it and they're in there for a big piece of work, that's a vision obstruction no matter what. So it varies, I think, day by day, but that's, that's just the corner closest to Second Street. So I don't have a good suggestion for you on that and I don't know if Melanie does either. We were sort of walking it from every different direction and, you know, it's, it's a challenge. We're open to anybody's suggestions.
Okay.
There's a few more things.
Okay.
Last week, I had about three, four different people call my attention to something that was on social media and also online about a person calling to action, demanding justice, stand with the Mixed Sisters United. "We need everybody who is anybody to take a stand right now." And basically, it demanded the firing of two of our police officers and our K-9. And I thought, "What? Hell, this is a little bit beyond anything I've seen." At first, a couple of people that I talked with thought it might just be a come-on for some kind of GoFundMe or some kind of fundraiser. I think maybe that was part of it, but when I looked into it and talked with the law center about it and so forth, it appears that this was generated by family members of a person who I'm not going to name tonight, except I have that person's name, demanding that Officer Barry Harsh, one of our newer officers, and Officer Riley Nemo, our K-9 officer, be immediately fired and that it will be an injustice if they are not immediately fired and that they have abused their power by restraining a person who suffered an arm injury. The flyer said that her arm was broken. We checked on that. She had a shoulder sprain from resisting when she was being handcuffed. She'd also resisted after she was being stopped for driving 100 miles an hour before the sheriff's department got her stopped. Both her and the occupant in the vehicle had multiple rap sheets with multiple felonies, including home invasion, armed robbery, felony firearms possession, and other reasons why an officer might have had a cause for caution. And in this situation, I think unless things have happened in the last couple of days, I'm not aware of, the county attorney's office is still considering how many charges should be filed against this person. So at that point, I don't know what the public's posture is on this as far as being out there on social media, except I would just say you shouldn't believe everything you see on social media or do funding donations to people that are hitting you up because of gross injustices. There's always a second side to the story and I just, I'll say that for the benefit of the public tonight, that I do not believe either of those officers would step outside of their responsibilities or their ethics. And I had that assurance from the officers out at the law centers that had already looked into this and were aware this was being circulated. Another thing that I wanted to report on tonight, this has been ongoing and our community has hundreds of people that are here courtesy of visas, partly student, partly all kinds of other visa reasons, but we've been following something up in northern Iowa where a sheriff took a position telling other law enforcement in the area not to immediately respond to something that's in our state statute now that we're supposed to cooperate to the extent of requests made, and I add the word reasonably made, by ICE concerning deportation and immigration issues. This sheriff in Decora, after he made that statement, about three hours later, he was asked by the governor's office to retract it. He refused to. He basically said, "I think it's a constitutional responsibility to check to see if this is done with due process." He then basically was told that he would be charged. The governor had the sheriff, Dan Marks, charged for not following the Iowa law as far as immediate response on a request by ICE. It turned out that the sheriff next door also had done something similar and stood with Dan Marks, the sheriff in Winneshake County or Decora. And this thing basically was covered for several weeks by the media. Eventually, the attorney general of Iowa, Brenda Burke, who had charged Sheriff Dan Marks, she withdrew her complaint. And at that point, the sheriff, as far as I could see it, and we've had that conversation here in our county because we do have the possibilities of immigration enforcement, the sheriff stuck to his guns as far as constitutional responsibility for due process, both federally and state. Same story with the sheriff in the county adjacent. And the county of Dubuque, the sheriff took a similar position and was told by the governor's office that they were going to be declared a sanctuary city and they would be deprived of funding. That, I think, I'm going to continue following it because I think as far as the deprivation of funding for having a posture that's called by the state, sanctuary posture, when it really is all about due process and just adhering to standards and ethics that I believe our sheriffs and our police departments follow, I think they'll all be subject to challenge in court. And my belief is that the attorney general realized she was getting close to having to deal with it as a court case and that it was probably a loser. So at this point, I think so far constitutionality as far as officers and due process is right where it should be as far as watching that unfold. Now, other than that, I did have one other thing that I saw. And the city of Ankeny and several of the towns up in Story County area are considering an ordinance amendment that most towns in the state have. They have to do with public places and places that are frequented by various, I guess I'm going to call it a customer base that's large enough to regulate concerning prohibited smoking. And those ordinances, we have one here in town that reaches out to restaurants and other places. The city of Ankeny is now adopting an ordinance that is aimed at vaping. And the CDC just released a study in the last couple of months about vaping being actually more harmful than nicotine smoking. And as a consequence, I guess they're about the first of this kind of ordinance in Iowa, but I expect that there will be several others up in the Story County area because, at least the articles I read indicated that's where this is happening first. But I do think probably you're going to have people, once they catch up with what CDC says about this, some people care what CDC says, and they're probably going to be concerned that vaping is actually the more popular kind of habit with people between 16 and 29 than nicotine smoking ever has been. So something for us to think about going forward. What I grasp from the Ankeny ordinance is they don't have to change very much of anything except adding a couple of words as far as vaporized smoke production devices, and they're there as far as the prohibition ordinances against other kinds of smoking that already exist. So if it's something that we want to think about, maybe sometimes either with our Public Safety Committee or one of our other committees, I'm, I'm just going to watch it and see how that ordnancy unfolds. It looks like it's something that there'll probably be a bunch of it all of a sudden and didn't see that one coming, but it's something we want to think about. I believe we've got at least three or four places in the community that sell vaping of some kind or vaping equipment. And so we do have businesses affected if we consider this.
Okay, great.
All right.
Okay, thank you, John. Committee and board reports, the ad hoc committee on Walton Lake.
Yeah, I have nothing to report, new really. No recommendations from the city, from the committee. Minister Tash, I'll be glad to take questions if you have any.
Questions to Doug or Matt?
Did you approve the minutes? They were prepared by Mr. Barlow?
Sorry?
They were prepared by Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But you approved them? You have reviewed them?
We approved them at the last committee, committee meeting, following the meeting. We formally approved them. It's on the agenda.
Let's move on to the water and sewer utilities.
Oh, that's, that's me. We didn't have a forum at the last meeting, so wasn't able to come together, but we will reschedule hopefully for the next week or two.
Okay, great. Administrator and department reports, who's going first?
I'm going first.
On the Walton Lake project, over the last couple of meetings, I've given a verbal update and so I've laid things out in detail here. We've, I've talked about that we've been following two, kind of two trains, the original project and an alternate version. If you've attempted any construction over the last year, sometimes your mind is set on prices pre-2020 and you think, "Oh, that should be a lot cheaper than what it actually is." And that is unfortunately what I had done here is thinking on an alternate project using a rock as a, rock or concrete as a backfill. The volume was going to be less and just kind of estimating it in my head, I expected it to be, I knew it was going to be more than the original project. I did not expect it to be nearly $175,000 more than the original project. So we are not, unless council directs otherwise, we are not going to proceed any farther in that alternative. Both the original project and the alternative project have been submitted to DNR DM safety for approval. Neither one of them have received a drawdown request. And then I think the only other thing that's, I guess, new information or to point out is while we're waiting for the drawdown permit, the only other thing that we will continue to work on or prepare for is discussing a box culvert alternative rather than the eight culverts. This, the main positive feature of that is that it would allow for habitat or fish, fish and other wildlife to go from one basin to another. I will say that I still have a lot of hesitancy of any alternative being used as, by kayakers. I think that there's a huge liability to the city, but there will be enough clearance for somebody to go under there. I don't think the city should encourage it, but, you know, a box culvert would have more clearance than what is currently being proposed. So we will talk with the contractor about if there is a cost difference for that box culvert and bring that back.
Can we?
Unless the council wants to direct otherwise.
I'm sorry, did I interrupt? But can't you put a sort of kind of barrier to prevent kayakers from coming through the culvert?
Yes, we could.
You're not recommending that?
Um, it's another cost. It can have, you know, it can get stuff caught on it. Honestly, something of that size is going to be, you know, more in like a one-foot gap which would be more dangerous, you know, someone can get caught in it. With a box culvert compared to, you know, the smaller culverts are going to have a guard on it, but the openings are going to be small enough that, you know, no one's going to get, the chances of getting a leg or, you know, something else. I'm, I'm not expressing myself very clearly here. I think there's a lot more risk in having some sort of guard there than there is not. I would rather have a sign that says, you know, "Enter at your own risk" or "Do not enter," and then if somebody is entering, it is totally at their risk.
Would we still need to request a drawdown from the DNR for the box culvert?
Do you understand?
No, go ahead.
You know, I was, you were answering a question, I have a question.
So DNR, the DM safety, their permit is mainly has to do with the hydrology of the lake and how much water is being backed up and how, and then also how much the lake is being lowered. With a box, with the box culvert alternative, the drawdown doesn't change and then the hydrology doesn't change. We wouldn't recommend a box culvert that would back up more water or less water. And so it would need to be submitted to DNR, but the thought is that it would not change the request to DNR. Okay.
Okay, so the request would be the same
Right.
for the current bridge project that we have?
Culvert project, yes.
Excuse me, culvert project, okay. So why is the box culvert, why would that be better?
For the...
Ecology, the wildlife?
Yes, yep, yep. Because that was one of the questions that DNR came back with. With the current proposal for original project, those culverts are near the surface of the water. And so any wildlife, any fish, birds may, you know, ducks may use it, but the fish are not going to come up into a warmer water to go from one basin to another. Whereas a box culvert is going to have a, some deeper water that the fish would be able to use.
So my question is, if you could, this is a multi-page report and thank you very much for providing the summary. If you could provide even a briefer summary, where are we with this project?
Waiting.
Waiting for what?
DNR.
So do we have any other, is there any other, I see the word alternative in this brief. Is there any other brief, it's the project that the council approved earlier this year?
Yeah.
That project?
The, what council approved earlier this year that we went out to bid for, we are still waiting on a DNR drawdown permission.
And do we expect that?
Sometime, yes. When, I don't know.
It's likely, more likely than not, probably, certainly?
It will, I guess Doug, you spoke a little bit with a few DNR staff. These permits typically take 60 days. You know, the correspondence on the, you know, permit being on hold and asking for additional information started back around the first of June. So we are, you know, right at the 60-day mark, so hopefully, you know, kind of any day now. But I don't know DNR's schedule.
If they grant the request, what happens then?
We can move forward. We have, the drawdown request includes notifying the property owners that are listed in the back of the report, notifying them in writing of the pending drawdown. And once those go out, then we have requested that we draw down that water level in a total of 14 days. And so that would be the time period that we're talking in. So two weeks or three weeks between the mailings and the drawdown before the contractor could start doing anything, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions?
At what point, what, oh.
Somebody else, if you were going to ask.
I was going to say, at what point is that going to impact our contracts currently? Like the delay, if the, I mean, maybe it's not even worthwhile to kind of speculate, but is there a time at which the delay in receiving this permit from the DNR might impact our contract?
So the last discussions that I had with Drish, the contractor that is under award, they were not going to voluntarily delay the project, but they have not requested any additional funds due to the delay caused by the permit.
Okay.
Is there a deadline for them to execute that clause?
No. Before we accept the project as final, typically.
So they could start and then charge us more later?
I would have to read the contract, but I'm thinking through, I, let me get back on that question.
Okay.
I will say change orders are never, not never, not as often in the owner's favor. So sometimes the contractor does get to make the decisions on those sort of things, but I will, I can look into the, I can look into the contract documents and get a better answer on that one.
Did you have a question, John?
I, I think I just heard my answer.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. The internal workday memo?
Well, council had asked staff for their opinions, their ideas, and this is what we came up with. I don't know that...
What does it say? Summarize it, please.
Summarize it, so we were summarizing what we would be using that time for. You know, we need to get together and go through the processes, for one thing. Try to get a better, I don't know, grouping of how we can make our process smoother while we are open to the public. And maybe that's cross-training. Sometimes we have, you know, there are lots of different, with our software, they have different videos that we can watch and things like that. And you can't do that when you're open. And it's just kind of better to get together and have that conversation. And then, yeah, then we also have more detailed work we'd like to delve into without the interruptions, if possible.
And I see in your memo, you suggested dates.
Yes, yes.
And also suggested certain tasks you'd like to perform on some of those dates, at least in this year, 2025.
To see how it works. Because that was, you know, it's kind of new. It's, I don't know that anybody's doing it. And, you know, when Councilman Florno had mentioned like an in-service day, that was like perfect, you know? It's, it's just a time for you to gather and get things in order.
Will we notify the public?
Well, we would post it, of course, on Facebook, the website, and messages on the door and notify the media so they can put it out there, too.
As soon as we get an app.
Yeah.
We could do it that way.
Yeah.
We need better communication tools.
So the proposals closing, actually, the third Tuesday of each month?
Mm-hmm. If acceptable.
Something you want to think about?
Yeah.
Bring it back as an action item next round?
Yeah. Next, next meeting?
I mean, you want me to go on August 19?
Well, we wouldn't do that one.
I mean, could we just move on it now?
Well, I would, I would like maybe to have a conversation more with the council about it. Maybe is it work, would work session be appropriate and then also put it on the agenda? Have more time, is on the agenda sufficient?
Yeah, put on the work session and put it as an item on the agenda in case you decide to move on it.
Study session.
I think that's fine. We have addressed this in a studies session before.
Yeah, that's where we wanted to come.
Right?
Yeah, that's why we brought this.
So, I mean, this is not new.
Well, no, the specific proposal is new, the dates are, I think.
And I really appreciate your, your obvious address of the days you're already closed or holidays.
Yeah.
That, I, yeah, I appreciate that.
I don't know that we've heard, I don't know, I haven't heard a specific date or a date per month that's been recommended or suggested, so that's something.
No, that was asked for staff to come up with a proposal, so.
My guess would be Tuesdays are a lesser patron-filled day, maybe?
Well, that's where we were, you know, Mondays are always chaotic, Fridays are chaotic. And, you know, it just gave time to prepare. If there's a shut-off day, it gave extra days to take care of business, so.
So why don't we just put an action item, next council meeting? And then if you guys come up with any other, you know, specific detail?
But then we're not allowing you guys to take advantage of it this month?
No, work session, no work session?
I don't think it's needed.
All right. Good deal.
We'll start in September.
If we allow you.
If allowed, exactly, exactly.
I'm just teasing you.
You got to start sometime, or you don't.
Okay, city administrator report.
Speaking of apps, you might want to look. We have been communicating with Aptigie and we still need to have a conversation with Civic Plus. We actually use Civic Plus now. We do have, Civic Plus will allow you to sign up for texts and emails. I don't think they do phone calls, but we need to see if we can expand that service. But Aptigie is an app that our school system here currently uses. They're actually nationwide. They have cities across the nation that use Aptigie. It's kind of a one-stop shop. I still have some questions myself, but they will, with the stroke of a statement on the keyboard, it will post on social media, whether you, whether it's Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Snapchat, all of those things, send an email, send a text, and can actually automate a phone call to specific things. I included department heads on the second conversation. I would like for council to, whether it goes to some committee, but I would eventually like for them to not only talk to the committee, but also talk to the council as a whole to see if this is something that we can move to, but it is something that we can all utilize. They will not interact with Civic Plus, we can't keep it. They would also redo our website, they actually reviewed that. So it's kind of all-inclusive, which is something that we were asked to look into. And, go ahead.
My question would be, could we have the who, the city staff that was on the IT committee review these different things, then come back to the council and discuss the different...
Absolutely.
Pros and cons and costs, et cetera?
Yes, yes, if that's what you wish, we can, we can do that. And if you would like for, now, coincidentally, didn't do this on purpose, I thought they were out of Des Moines, but they are actually out of Fayetteville, Arkansas, I believe. Even though I came from there, I didn't realize that. There are no cities in Iowa that uses Aptigie. The school systems do, again, but they have them nationwide. I'm familiar, I just, on this end of it, I had never seen it before. It seemed relatively simple from the, us pushing information out. But, and again, the data collection, the phone numbers and what have you, come from the utility bills and they can opt out of it. I think that's how the schools do it as well. And what information that we have, we can disseminate that through this app and then they can say, reporter's junk and it's gonzo. But she can, via Zoom, and talk to the council and kind of run through all the other cities that they've done and how it works for them, so.
So if you're a parent and you have a child in the school district and you have that app, both, the same app will access both institutions?
From my understanding. So those are the questions that we need to ask them.
Doug, are you saying that's what Fairfield currently uses? Or you're just saying, okay. So, yeah, I mean, I get notifications by email, text, phone.
And you don't have the Aptigie app on your phone?
No.
So it's our app that pushes out to the citizens? And you can type them in?
You can sign up for whichever, I can sign up my email, my phone to be called, or a text message. Or you could do all three, you could do two of the three.
So let's, if that's okay, council, let the staff bring back a little more detail on both of these and then we'll put together, we'll have that on a work session and...
Is that fair?
Do you see a disconnect between CivCo and that? Like, are you seeing an issue that they don't communicate together? Did I read that in your?
Yeah, so, yeah, so Civic Plus, they do not interact.
I'm sorry, Civic Plus.
Yeah, that's okay. They do not, they do not interact with one another, because I did ask that question. I still want to vet out what we currently have, because it could save us money. We would have to, everybody's going to have to share on this cost and spread it out amongst departments. But it would be perfect for Water and Sewer, that we've got SSOs, we've got a water main break, we've got potholes, we've got street closures, we've got whatever it may be. They can type it in, there's no additional, you know, user fees per person. It's, we can have, we can assign users and they can type in their messages and it's gonzo.
And honestly, it might be beneficial for council to see like a short demo of Civic Plus that we're currently using today at a work session, or, yeah, work session.
And the school has offered to come and actually...
But like what we're currently using internally.
And the other, and the other one, too, right?
The other one, I'm going to get ahold of them, but I've actually gone on our website and signed up for the alerts and I don't, I don't, I don't get as many as I thought that I would. And so, anyway, we're going to look into that and we'll bring that back to you. But I definitely, I need more than just, you know, one or two, I need a head nod from...
Well, it sounds like if we're going to have a work session the first weekend in October, perhaps we could have a short demo of both softwares, both programs, just to compare them.
After it's circulated to IT committee or what's the timeline for this then? Are we going to have a rec, well, I guess it doesn't make sense to send it to committee if we're just going to talk about it in the work session?
Well, I think they need to dig into cost. You know, what are the pros and cons of each thing? And maybe they'll figure out one's not even, can't work. So if they bring us two or three options, we're talking about two here, but maybe there's a third option. So bring us the options of what they look like and we can do demos to see them.
Okay, let's see if I can set something up.
Okay.
Okay. Then I did discuss a little bit about property review. There are some opportunities. They, we, this governing body has been talking about City Hall for a decade. And I think we've been in this building for 50 years. We are outgrowing it. It is an issue that we've discussed for quite some time that I've got, I actually have employees in a room closet and in hallways and in meeting rooms.
Right now?
Yes, right now, absolutely. So...
Tonight?
Huh? Not tonight, but during the day, yes. But...
Change other desks.
Yeah. So, and also, you know, the interaction, we have people scattered all over town. That's something that, that we'd talked about and...
That was interesting, you said scattered all over town, performing administrative functions for the city. Can you give an example?
Yeah, so, well, for instance, Grow Fairfield, who interacts with the city, is elsewhere. We'd have the RAC committee is elsewhere. We have the CBB is elsewhere. The Chamber of Commerce is elsewhere.
What's CBB?
Conventionist.
CBB, okay.
Yes, the Chamber of Commerce is elsewhere. That, we have department heads that are where they need to be, but they come here and they meet in this room and there's still not enough room for all of them to convene to actually have these discussions. Our, you know, our budget meetings that we're actually working together. And it really is hard, these meetings that we do have are open to the public, but we get cramped into a small, into a small room where they're in here and we're moving chairs out and then people try to come in and we've got people scattered about. So what does this not only look like for the administrative staff, but for the operating staff, for the city council and for the community itself? And then having the conversations that even the county's outgrowing themselves and that, you know, they're actually talking about, you know, we have the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, do we, you know, look into a place to where City Hall is not only, you know, just the administrative piece, but also the community piece, but also maybe have, like I discussed in an email six months ago or so, do we have an annex to where we have the Police Department, City Hall, Fire Department, all of those things together? What does that look like? Then we actually do have properties, you know, we have the properties next door. All three of those are open, are going to be or are for sale. And do we expand, do we go up? Do we move to the old fire station, do we rebuild that? What does that look like? So that is a conversation that not only do, does the governing body need to look into, but also community engagement, what's that look like? So something to consider. So, something to consider. Then, I actually wanted to shout out to Bob Ferguson and his weed team downtown, he has been out, and I think you've probably have seen him and his, his many volunteers, and over 200 hours of volunteers going out, and just the hard work of pulling weeds, and it's actually been this kind of incubator project where now the property owners are taking notes and going, I want mine to look like that, too. Him and I actually walked around and looked at our sidewalks, and those sorts of things, I have a city manager's meeting at the end of this month, and I actually was in Leclerc not too long ago, and I would like to speak to their, their city manager and talk about how they had redone their downtown streets and sidewalks, and how that was, that was paid for, and what that looks like, but that's kind of a focus, is that walkability piece.
I mean, I think that's something they'll notice tomorrow at the Main Street celebration, if you will, they should notice those from out of town.
Yes.
They'll see the difference.
And then, the other thing that I wanted to say was the Street Department, who has been working hard down at Howard Park, they got the grant to make an eight-foot-wide sidewalk through, for the farmer's market and their vendors, and actually, I can tell you that six to eight feet wide for major thoroughfares is actually a very common practice in municipalities that they're going away from the 36, 48-inch wide sidewalks to multi-use paths, so this will be the second one that we have, because the other one is down from the Highway One project from the roundabout, and we will most likely start to see more of those, but we want to get people out of the street and onto the walking paths and out of the pedestrian automobile interface. So, I think that project is completed, but might be something worth checking out. I said for questions.
Any questions for Doug? Saying none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move by two, who? Second, by, by Estee. All those in favor say aye. All those, same sign.
I know, I'd love...
Meeting adjourned, thank you.